I told him to say, uh, what is, what is it? Or we're gonna do some more. Uh, I don't know. So, uh.
You're seeing this, you're right.
He's treating me. We went with him for a trial.
You're serious?
Yes.
I got a lot of people here.
I've been promised a lot of that.
No. Y'all gonna be doing, y'all gonna be doing some travel.
He said every day.
That's great.
Yeah, he's inside.
But I know y'all, I know, I know.
See him swim on there? I think he told me what.
And they, they were having a little.
Oh, so he put it.
They were, they were.
They were having a struggle.
Yeah.
They really would.
He was, he said, he said.
I didn't bring anything with my phone.
Oh, that is great. The main. Cause we're in the last.
See, we, these are, we got a race. That's.
When I left here, you're saying, man, have a lot of your guys. I've got the same thing from my own.
Yeah. Maybe just shit.
Right.
Oh.
All right, it's six o'clock, so we'll start the workshop and we'll go to the Lord's Prayer. Paul gets going. God, heaven gracious, Father, we just love you so much and thank you, Lord, for your love and mercy toward us and God. And God, we just give you praise, Lord, that the storm we just experienced was not nearly as bad as it could have been and predicted to be. God, we thank you for keeping all of our citizens safe. And God, we ask you to bless us in this workshop tonight, Lord, against the wisdom and the guidance that we need to make the best decisions for the citizens of Tiff County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, do you have anybody in all of this who can speak to us about anything for five minutes or less?
So, I think I'll get up and say something.
All right.
I'm, uh, Jonathan Garvey, uh, 101 East 12th Street, Tiff, from Georgia.
Yeah.
This reassessment that we've had, I'm sure everybody's probably heard about it in some way, some form or fashion. I had a long conversation with Jim last week and we discussed how the, the contract was with the GMASS signed and, you know, certified. You guys pay the bills, um, because that's what the court wants us to do. And, uh, but nobody really, um, confirms that what GMASS did was correct. So, the, the assessor just gets the information and then, you know, passes along to the taxpayer and it's up to the taxpayer to determine whether the GMASS has done a good job or not. And what I'm seeing, I think they've done a terrible job. So, I think we need to really look into this, uh, reassessment that GMASS has done. I think if they've done a horrible job, it's a mess. There's values on identical homes that bought from each other, hundred thousand dollar difference. And to me, that's way wrong. We can look at it as a, counties look at it and assessors can look at it. And that's my main point of standing up and saying, I think the GMASS reevaluation is, is a mess and it's wrong. That's, that's what I want to say. Now, I don't know who, um, regulates that reassessment. Is it the county? Is it the assessor? I don't know that.
Well, you're looking at me like you want an answer from me.
Yeah. I want to answer this other guy. You seem like the smartest guy.
Right, I mean, you never refer. It's like me.
You're the county attorney.
Department of Revenue.
The, the, the.
Department of Revenue.
That's correct.
Department of Revenue.
And the process, you know, and, and it may sound, it may seem clumsy and it is clumsy in some regards because it places a burden, if you will, on the taxpayer to say, you know what? I don't think this is correct as relates to me. You go through the appellate process and, you know, it's a, uh.
So, Tiff County has to just dish out six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars on something that's wrong?
No. No, you're letting me finish.
No.
That's why she called you the rest of them. If I pause, I need a breath. Well, I can talk, okay? But, uh, so, but ultimately, the Department of Revenue comes down and there, there'll be a postmortem, if you will, okay? And so, what they're looking at is, is that it's uniformed across that digest and they're looking at that sweet spot at forty percent. You're aware of that, that's been explained to you.
Yes.
Now, if GMASS is outside of those numbers, not only are we unhappy, and y'all already are unhappy, Department of Revenue will be unhappy. And so, there is a, uh, mechanism at that point, both contractually and within the framework of what Department of Revenue in state of Georgia expects out of GMASS, which require a, I've never seen it happen, so I'm talking about an abstract. But where, where it would require them to come back in, in my estimate, would be, you know, speaking, you know, cut. They'd, they'd have to come back in and, and critically reevaluate where, you know, what these classifications of property are and the evaluations of across those. Because constitutionally, it, it matters. You've got to have, um, the states looking for that level of uniformity in the system. And so, if you have a failure at a level that hives or prevented the, um, the digest from meeting that forty percent, Department of Revenue is going to, uh, step. If they're going to, there, there will be some expectation, and I don't know what that is from the state level.
Okay.
But I, I, I will say this, not, not in defense of, I'm not, that's not meant to be this, but I do know they've done this more than once and more than.
I, I, I've heard that.
And, and, and in the context of that, using my term, not, that's not a legal term, but the postmortem, as I call it, uh, they, they have met those standards and the, where they've done it in, in the past and other places. And they've come in and they've had the, uh, uh, the, the state do the, um, the analysis. They've met that forty percent. There's, there's a very narrow, maybe margin error, you know, so they, you know, it could be thirty-nine A or thirty-nine, I don't know what that is, but they've been in with that, they've, they've been in that margin error. So, if you, you know, I'm not saying that this is wrong. I'm not challenging your supposition or your, your position, but I'm saying that, you know, if you are, um, looking for somebody that hit the nail on the top, they, 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 they met that criteria from a selectus standpoint.
And on the ratio, I can't speak for what I don't know. I'm tied in everybody's property.
Right, so, so when, Tony was talking, when he talks about the postmortem, uh, but what, so when GMASS finished, uh, this, their rebound, uh, a sales ratio was done on the digest based on their rebound. That's been done. So, that's pre appeals, right? So, now, if we go through this appeals process, uh, when we get to the other side of it, we will do a sales ratio post appeals.
Right.
And that's the postmortem report where we will be able to see, you know, what did it look like before the appeals? What did it look like after appeals? And did they do their, did they adequately do their job? I think that's the answer to your question. Then it becomes, uh, about contractual obligations and about the Department of Revenue too. Is that?
Gotcha.
Makes sense?
Yep.
But, but it's, so much of this, you know, somebody somewhere a long, long time ago decided that, that this process, that, you know, sometimes it doesn't make sense to go to Ta-Ta to get about Austin, but that made me feel that way here. But that's, uh, that's what we have to try to manage through. And I know it is challenging.
Concerns, uh.
Well, I got told the other day, I understand that you're, you're concerned with the process. It, it's not user friendly and as Tony says, it's clumsy.
Right.
But right now, it, it's the process. But there is a mechanism in it for, to see if this, you know, it was done well or, or done poorly.
So, did I hear you correctly that we have to get a, if there's more than eight percent appeal? Now, is that after their meeting with the appraiser?
So, here's, here's, how about that? So, the appeals process goes through August the twelfth.
Correct. That's.
So, you have to, so, once that's done, let's say that there was not, this was not a mass appeal, say it was a normal year, right? And, uh, once, uh, we started the appeals process, if the total number of appeals was less than eight percent of the total parcels or less than eight percent value of the gross digest, then he sends out to Chad, Chad certifies, sends it to Department of Revenue, they certify the digest and Chad sends out bills. But now, when they get through down there, until it falls below eight percent, which is fifteen hundred and.
Eighty, eighty.
Eighty.
Parcels.
So, there's more than fifteen, a hundred, eighty parcels under appeal, then he won't send it to Chad and Chad can't send it to Department of Revenue. It holds the county and the Board of Education in school in limbo as far as billing and receiving revenue. Until it falls below either eight percent of total, it's, it's and or, right? Eight percent of total parcels or eight percent of dollar value of the total digest. So, that's what, I mean, so if we get to Tuesday and we're at ten percent, then we can't do anything until we get to eight percent. But, but the appeals don't end just because the appeal deadline's there. That's the appeal to file, the application. I mean, that's the period to file an application for appeal. We'll continue to hear appeals after that. And as soon as it falls below that eight percent, then, then they'll certify a digest and we'll bill. But that doesn't mean that we're through with dealing with, with the whole process. It goes on.
That's correct. Okay. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, anyone else want to talk to us? State your name and address, please?
I'm Deborah Myl, uh, four, four, two, zero, Fraser Circle. I got a question you're all probably going to laugh at, but I'd like to know why we even have property tax. If I remember correctly, when I purchased my home, I paid taxes on that home, which included the property. And I know you guys are probably going to say, oh, it's the state. Everybody in the nation, I think, has property tax. Am I correct or incorrect?
Not everybody.
Not everybody?
Now, they do, they do a part, they ain't got tax, right?
They have property tax.
They have property tax. Is there any state that doesn't have property tax?
Not that low rate.
Okay. I stand corrected.
I'm at it.
Well, no, I, I've never understood how that was ever passed and allowed to begin with, because that, it's double taxation. My second question is, who gets the money for our property tax? I mean, what percent does Tiff County receive?
The property tax is, you know, I don't know the exact numbers, I mean, that's, that's, that's a number that can be kind of known, but the property taxes go to support in, you have jurisdictions, you have Tiff County. It's a subdivision, a political subdivision, you have the city of Tiff, it's a political subdivision. You have the school board within the state of Georgia. Those states may be different. You have three entities that have the legal authority as, as guided by the state constitution, the state law, to, to tax. Uh, and that's, those are those three entities. So, the municipalities can have a tax. If you live inside the city, you pay municipal tax. You also pay a county tax and then the school board. The school board has a very defined purpose. If you pay property taxes there, and I don't remember the number, but on a percentage basis, the property taxes for the school board really represent a very small amount of the overall, as I understand it, overall budget. They get enormous amount of federal funding and funding from most places. But the services that you receive at the county level are supported by those property taxes. So, you know, your fire, you know, nine-one-one, uh, you know, all the necessary services that we need and desire.
For the sheriff's, sheriff's department.
So, Tiff County receives all of the property tax money?
No, ma'am. The city, the school board receives property tax money. The county receives property tax money. And if you live inside the city, you may be taxed separately. In the city, you receive that for the services they provide.
Okay, so the money stays here?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Um, is there a way to get a crystal clear breakdown of what the property tax money is used for and, uh, generalities?
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to copy and I'm sure most of us that are feeling our taxes would like to know. I mean, if you're going to give somebody money, you want to know what you're going to do with it.
When you say crystal clear, so, I mean, if you made that request to me, I would, uh, what I would give you is this, which is our budget. Now, so, to me, that's crystal clear. To you, maybe not so much. So, I'm trying to be, you know, to be honest with you. So, to say, I mean, you can, as you go through here, uh, everything, when I see this, I see, I see the sheriff's department, I see patrol division, I see, I see investigations, I see code enforcement, I see cleaning and zoning, I see the fire department. You know, all of that, to me, comes out of this. But, and I can tell you what departments or what functions that the county pays for out of, out of the general fund, but you'd have to get that same thing from the city. And then the school board becomes a little more complex, because as Tony says, the majority of their funding comes from state, federal funds. But they have a requirement, you know, it has something called QBE, and I'm not a school board person, so I'm just kind of talking about what I think I know. That they have a requirement to have so much local funding to qualify for this funding that comes down from the state and federal. So, if they're not collecting enough locally, it, it affects their money that comes down and feeds from federal government through the state, through the state board, that's tested, that's, uh, that. So, can I give you a list of the services that we provide? Yes, ma'am. And if you'll, uh, give the clerk your email address, I'll, I'll send that to you. And, uh, and you can do the same thing with the city and the school board, I think, will be, you know, they, they teach, I mean, they do that. They have a lot of employees and a lot of overhead and a lot of costs. I couldn't tell you what the exact breakdown is, but, uh, may make it answer that question for you. As for percentage of, you know, who collects what taxes, that, that's dependent upon, uh, the millage rate that's set by each one of those entities. So, it's possible, uh, that you pay, in most situations, in Georgia, you pay more to the school board. Next, because the county has countywide services they have to deliver to the county. And then lastly, to, to municipal government. Some places where you have Atlanta or, you know, that kind of stuff, you could pay more in.
Municipal taxes.
Municipal taxes and you do a county taxes because of the level of services there. So, I mean, if there's not a cut and dry answer on what percentage it is and it fluctuates. I mean, uh, the county's millage rate since two thousand and four has not increased. And so, you know, one time the cities was much lower than the counties, but the cities has increased where the counties has not. So, they've become closer as far as a percentage, if you look at the overall tax dollars that fund all three of those entities. And, you know, some communities, you don't just have, I mean, the city of Tifton is the only municipality in this county that collects property taxes. Ta-Ta and Omega do not. And that's a whole nother conversation about level of sales tax and how that's rolled back and that kind of stuff. But if you went to a, to a bigger, more, you know, metropolitan county, you may have five cities who collect property taxes in that county. They all have a right to do that, but the citizens that live in those cities don't only pay the property taxes for, to their cities, so.
The property, the group, higher level, your property taxes are the, are one of the revenue sources that, that's used to provide the necessary services for the people in the community. That's what it means.
When your initial question gets into a theoretical discussion, it goes on all the time, where people talk about, you hear them talk about flat taxes versus income taxes versus property taxes. They're talking about everybody paying a percentage of, uh, you know, through a sales tax or through something like that. Uh, so then, you know, there's this discussion that goes on all the time about what is the proper taxing mechanism? Because the truth is, as a society, if you pick up the phone, dial nine-one-one and you want somebody to answer that and then you want an ambulance with two paramedics to show up to the house, that costs money. And, uh, and it costs money year after year after year after year. So, there has to be a revenue mechanism in place. The property tax mechanism, the proper ones, uh, that's up for debate, uh, open for debate.
What percentage of our revenues come from property taxes?
Uh.
Forty's.
Forty percent, I think, of just thirteen million out of a, you know, a muffin.
Yeah, I knew it was less, a good bit less than half.
Thirty million, uh, but then.
So, property tax, my point is, property taxes doesn't come anywhere near paying toward the full scope or what's going to.
So, you know, lost is a close second, which is, uh, it's a rollback property tax, but that comes from sales tax. And then, then other funding, fines, forfeiture, revenue, there's a whole, I mean, this first.
Catalog of revenues.
Yeah, this part, this first part of this budget is about revenues. The second part is about expenditures, right? So, you set your revenues in the first part, you know what money you're going to have, and then you have to set your expenditures, because in Georgia, you're required to have a balanced budget every year to live within that balanced budget. So, your revenues and your expenditures have to match. And then you live with inside that money for, you know, a twelve month period.
At this point, what percent of, um, Tiff County people have appealed? Do you have a group on that information at this point?
Uh, so, I mean, when you, when you say Tiff County people, you mean, i- it actually becomes property owners? And all of those people, so everybody who lives in Tiff County is a Tiff County citizen, that's on property.
No, I'm referring to the property owners.
Yes, ma'am. And, uh, and so, when you're referring to property owners, you're referring to parcelers, some of which do not live in Tiff County. So, there's about nineteen thousand.
Three hundred and fifty parcels.
And as of this morning, about fifteen hundred of those, no, thirteen hundred of those?
Thirteen hundred are pending.
Are pending.
We've had about six hundred that have resolved.
So, we, so out of those nineteen thousand, we've had, uh.
Roughly about two thousand.
About two thousand appeal. We're nineteen thousand plus and we've had about two thousand to appeal. And of those two thousand, six hundred have already been resolved through meeting with the, the Board of Assessors.
If they own property here, but they don't live here, are they included?
You still have to pay property taxes, yes, ma'am.
And you still have.
So, they're, people, they're considered part of the.
They have the same property rights as somebody that doesn't live there.
Okay. Um, the group that y'all had that came in, that did the assessment, who made the decision on who they were? As I understand it, there was only one group that would even do it. Are they disabled to do it?
So, we, so in Georgia, when you spend the kind of money you spend doing that, there's laws that require as far as the bid process, we just can't. You know, there's certain things that you can bid, but those kind of things you have to bid on. And it went on the Georgia procurement website, which is a requirement in the state of Georgia, which basically advertises that for all available bidders who would do that kind of work. And, uh, we had some responses, but we only had one positive response. The other one declined to do the size of it. And, uh, and GMASS was the only company that was a, was a positive responder to that bid. Now, I will tell you that I have since asked the question of Department of Revenue, who's the biggest mass appraisal service in the state of Georgia? They will tell you, it's GMASS. I also asked Department of Revenue, this is just a fact, I, I did, I said, how many, uh, they've been doing this a long time. They said, yes. I said, how many of, of their mass appraisals have been flawed? And they told me none. So, in their opinion, we're, you know, and I'm not saying this is right or wrong. In their opinion, until it's proven otherwise, these people have a track record of being right. And, uh, and what we explained to Mr. Garvey earlier is, the only way that we can tell that it's wrong is we get on the other side of this and we get that sales ratio study and we can see what the difference in the appeals, pre-appeal ratio and post-appeal ratio, and that'll show us if it was correct or not.
So, in other words, the more people that move out of Tiff County and sell their homes here, the more our property tax increased, increases? Is that how it works?
No, ma'am. So, uh, the state of Georgia has a tax uniformity law. And basically what it says is, it over, you know, they started taxes in the eight, late eighteen hundreds or the nineteen hundreds. And initially, I believe, they allowed counties and cities to determine how that tax was done. But because they wanted it to be uniform across the state, they quickly decided that you couldn't have a hundred fifty-nine counties doing it different ways and have any kind of uniformity. So, the state, the state took back the power to tax. And if you read in the Constitution, it says the only person that has, the only entity in the state of Georgia that has the property, the, the right to tax is the state of Georgia. But then the state assigns that right to the county government, which is a subdivision of the state, city governments, which are a municipal organization that the state does statute, create statutory, and then boards of education, which is also part of the state. But when they say that we have the right to levy taxes, we have to levy those taxes in the manner that the state says we have to levy them, right? They say we can tax and they tell us how we tax. We don't get to make that up here on how to do that. Part of what that requires is, uh, state law says that you're taxed on forty percent of the current fair market value of your property. And then they have a formula that does that. And then, then we're required to make sure that our digest falls within, it can be as low as thirty-six percent or as high as forty-four percent, but it's got to be between thirty-six and forty-four, preferably somewhere around forty percent of fair market value. So, what happened is, at twenty nineteen, in twenty nineteen, we were at thirty-eight plus percentage of fair market value, which put us within the, the realm of where we were supposed to be. COVID hit and in twenty twenty, our sales, that's called a sales ratio, we refer to, right? Went down to thirty-six or right at thirty, thirty-four.
Thirty-eight.
Then by, uh, twenty twenty-two, it was at thirty. And well without, well lower than what the state allows us to have. So, we get a letter from Department of Revenue that says, Tiff County, you're, you're going to meet your sales ratio, you've got to bring this in, in line, which that requires the mass rebound. So, I mean, there's a lot of, I'll tell you why I think that it's happening, because this is happening all over state of Georgia, this not in Tiff County. So, we came out of COVID, right? And, uh, and the cost of materials to build houses went up exponentially. The cost of labor that built houses went up exponentially. So, you would have thought, coming out of COVID, that the housing market would have declined, right? Houses cost more, people weren't going to pay more for what they could have bought for less in twenty twenty, pre-COVID. But that's not the case. The housing market that had done this starting post-COVID and still just here, right? So, the cost of homes went up, the new home went up because the cost of goods were more and the cost of labor was more. So, what you could buy, uh, eighteen hundred square foot house in nineteen, twenty nineteen, far you could not buy it for in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-two, when we got our letter. So, that's called inflationary growth, right? You, you, you didn't add anything to your property, you didn't put a swimming pool in, you didn't build a, a shelter on it, you didn't make any improvements to that property, but it is now worth more in twenty twenty-two and today in twenty twenty-four than it was in twenty nineteen. But we have to account for that. The law requires us to. That's why you do the rebound. That rebound is basically accounting for and identifying that inflationary growth, because the state law requires us to do that. Now, it also requires the county, once that's established and it's an inflationary growth, then we have to roll that back as part of the millage rate, so. And I actually left this in here from another meeting, so I'm glad I did, asking this question. So, in twenty, so last year, the county's millage rate was eleven point eight five three meals. All right? That was on, uh, a digest that generated about one one, one point one million dollars.
What year?
This was last year. FY twenty-four for us, we're going into FY twenty-five now. And FY twenty-five, after this rebound, one meal generates one point eight million dollars. So, last year it generated one point one, this year it's going to generate one point eight, right? If it's just net. But what the law says is you can't take that, because of that one point eight, you know, almost six hundred thousand, I mean, six hundred, yes, thousand dollars of that or six hundred million, if we're in the one point eight billion, is, is inflationary growth. So, no real improvements were made to properties, it's just due to the change in the market, right? So, we have to roll that back. So, last year where our millage rate was eleven point eight five three, we took a snapshot in June, as the date, it was June sixth. And I actually did this. And our millage rate would, if we had stopped that day and the appeals were done, it would be eight point one one meals. So, the tax rate has gone from eleven point eight five three down to eight point one one, which is three point seven four two, uh, millage rate decrease. And the law requires us to do that. And if we don't do that, if it doesn't come down to what that rollback rate is, then we have to hold three public hearings saying we're, we're raising your taxes. Well, Tiff County's rolling yours all the way back. And what I can't tell you right now today is what it, what that rollback rate's going to be. The eight point one one was taken on a snapshot done, right, on six, six. When we get through the appeals process and that digest is certified, then the tax commissioners will send it to the board of commissioners and they'll tell you this is what your, your millage rate will be if you adhere to the rollback requirement. And I know all that sounds like a lot, but that, that's the process. So, so theoretically, your millage rate rolls back this much, right? Two things decide how much you're paying taxes. Your home value, your property value times your millage rate. That gives you how much you're paying taxes. So, if, if your home value only went up this much and the millage rate went down this much, it's possible that you could pay to the county less in taxes than you paid last year. And I'm just talking about the county, I'm not talking about the school board or the city. But, but if your property went up this much and this is what the rollback is, it's possible you could pay more. So, some people will pay less, some people will pay basically the same, and some people will pay more in taxes depending on what that, that value is. But the rollback rate is not set by each property, it's set by the whole digest. That's what it says. We can only collect the same amount of money this year that we collected last year. So, if we are collecting, now this used thirteen million dollars last year, we can only collect thirteen million dollars this year. We're just doing it at a lower millage rate because we're connecting, collecting more meals, but we won't collect more. But it doesn't mean each individual property might not see an increase or a decrease or stay the same.
All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, I see no movement, but we can go down to item five, items to be discussed for regular session on August the twelfth. First, item five, call one, the GDOT indemnification and whole homeless agreement, Ms. Jordan.
Um, do you want to do this, Mr. Chairman, or?
Go ahead.
Um, the tourism association has approved funding for four gateway signs and two of them will be on I seventy-five. And we made application through the D, um, GDOT process, but they require this indemnification and whole homeless agreement. And this is the last step in the process for the, for its certificates.
All right, any questions?
They're going to look good.
All right, consent agenda? Go ahead. All right, five point two, alcohol license application submitted by Deepak Seerada for KT Foods Incorporated located twenty-seven ten US Highway forty-one South.
Okay, this location has previously had a license, but is now under new ownership. The sheriff has reviewed the application and recommended approval.
I have a question. Okay, if it's under new ownership and they haven't been approved, should they be selling alcohol already?
It depends on if they're sales, but I don't get into when their dates are for sale and all that.
Okay. Because.
It's a good question.
And I would like to ask the sheriff that, because that's in my district and I, when I saw this, I didn't know if it was a renewal or a new one. So, I went this morning to see, they had alcohol, the store is right up the street. So, I knew they sold alcohol, I knew they sold beer and wine, but they already had alcohol there. And it was being purchased this morning. So, I was wondering, Mr. Attorney, if. So I was wondering, Mr. Attorney, if they're doing, if it's under a new ownership, should they have been selling alcohol already? I don't know if the old, it has expired.
It has not.
It has not expired, but they're not operating under that. They're.
So, you know, is this alcohol license, is the self-impetus approval of this alcohol license, have they swapped ownership? I mean, those kind of things, I think, would be relevant, it'd be a case-by-case basis. I mean, I think if they, if a new owner started, you know, flat this day, then, I mean, what they're doing is, they're correcting what you're asking. I understand, even though our license is not up, we're applying for a new. So, you know, that, I think what you're asking is, it depends on the date that it gets sold, when that switches over. And a lot of these things, sometimes it's a sale within family, and, you know, so.
To your point, though, there, it is possible that you can have a transaction.
Does it, this?
That creates, you lose your privilege to have a license because the new owner is not licensed and has not had to give out a license and seeking. But also, in a process, it'd be interesting, you could ask to know that, I suppose, and that, but also, maybe you. But the minute we approve here, you go straight to the Department of Revenue. And the Department of Revenue, they have their criteria for evaluations, and one of those, for various reasons. But I don't know, my guess also is that that is evaluated pretty certainly by them before they, because they, you know, there's two-step process. When we give a license, it's not until gone, they still have to, they still do evaluation there. So, um, so I don't know the answer on this particular.
And it could be, because the license is usually in the manager's name, and if whoever's buying it was to hire the manager or has the agreement with the current manager to let them operate under his license until it was purchased?
We have a designated person with the Department of Revenue here that has the job going out and, they're the point of sale, right, in the store. These folks know him just like, and they know who he is when they're applying up here. And that's just, very brief illustration, that's the information, you know, you could call them up, write a call, and say, what's off the process over here, and get some clarity how they do it. But there is a person assigned to either Tiff County or maybe a couple counties out there, in the Department of Division.
We'll see if we can find the Tiff County before we're here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so keep this on record.
Yes, please.
All right, five point three, alcohol license application submitted by Gagar Shah for Shreen, Tipton Incorporated located at twenty-four ninety-four US Highway eighty-two East Brookfield.
Um, this location also has previously had a license, but is now under new ownership, and the sheriff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Okay, so consent, gentlemen, or record? Record, record. Okay. And then five point, the alcohol license application submitted by Avin Budal for a name of Gas Incorporated located at twenty-five fifty-four US Highway eighty-two East.
Now, this location's had a license in the past, but the store has been closed for some time, and it has recently been purchased, and the new owner is applying for an alcohol license. The sheriff has reviewed this application and does not recommend approval based on the criminal history. And you'll see there, in your package, I have the code section, not specifically of what this, was in this person's background, but the statute that the sheriff used to not recommend.
Okay, so just.
We don't record it as well.
Revo, one question, gentlemen. All right, anybody having any items for discussion on? All right, Mr. Carter, you have anything?
So, once again, I know that we kind of dodged the bullet with the storm that came through, but I'll tell you that we had wealthy thirty trees down, a lot of mobile accidents, just a power outage that, you know, the storm took a sunny eastward track, and they were predicting a much more north track, and then up through Tipton, then a eastward track, so, as you alluded to in your prayer, we came out on a good side of that, but I'll tell you that when the U S C was stood up, we'd be very, very proud of the people that left this county. Most people were home sheltered in place, and we had public work crews, fire department, sheriff, paramedics. Those folks were still working, you know, they would have worked through, even if the storm had come straight up I seventy-five, and the attack would have been vastly different. So when you see that operation running, it's something to be proud of, and the taxpayers don't see that. It happens when, you know, most folks are home watching the weather channel. But just for instance, and I got there at four thirty yesterday morning, they were already there, queued up, and, you know, very quickly after that, you know, went from being five people to being thirty people in that room, managing calls, managing phones, answering questions, managing resources. So GMA Director Fowler and his folks, Fire Department, all our law enforcement and public sector and public workpeople do a stellar job, and they do it at times when they're working and their families are home, so. If you get a chance, tell them thanks for what they do, because that's a little love and yelling, honestly, and their good thoughts. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Allen, listen.
Yes, start it, Eddie.
Paul. I'm good. Ready?
I got one thing. Being at the hospital, one of the big concerns, and we, this was a couple of hurricanes back. Hate to say that, we, that how many hurricanes come through, everybody, a couple hurricanes back, we, there was an issue with water source. And I reached out in a text, asking people and all that, because we had an issue with generators. And generators been replaced, which is awesome. New generators means they should run. However, I would like for the county to reach out and ask for documentation where these generators are tested, where they're low bank, and everything like, there should be, to ensure that they're going to run like they're supposed to be. Battery changes, all that stuff. You can't just say they're new and trust they're gonna crank when you turn the key, because they don't always do.
I don't disagree with that, but when you called me and asked me about that, I called and reached out to Adam Cobb.
I understand.
And Adam, they had just gone Friday, and basically, even though they run tests, they actually checked every generator, made sure they came online, everything.
I would just like to see us get, put it on the schedule, when they run the tests.
Send us the paperwork.
Send us the paperwork, so that it's documented, so.
I'll make a request for that.
When something goes wrong, we can say they were running, this one was running good at this time.
Yes, sir.
Because failure's failure, I mean, it's gonna happen. It's man-made, it's not God-made.
Amy?
Yeah, we're good. Stan?
For, I forgot your name, it's a Fraser Circle, but I think there's a video on ACCG that explains all the services that property taxes pay for. And if I can find that, I'll get to Maryam, if she's got your email address and will forward it to you. It's a pretty good video. It's been several years since I've seen it, but I think if it's still on their website, we can find it.
You're absolutely right, it's a good video.
Do you remember if it's still on there or not?
I think so. You're right, it's very good.
But that's all I got.
All right, thank you for that, Stan.
Okay.
Showtime.
Well, first, I want to say, hey, Chris. Chris left us and went to higher grounds in Sebastian, and I miss you already. I want to say thank you to all the department heads that put themselves in harm's way during our past predicted weather. And Jim is absolutely correct. While I'm home looking at the weather, they're actually out in it, and I really appreciate each and every one of them taking time from their homes to make sure that Tiff and Tiff County is safe. Next, I want to say thank you to Jim. Jim, I know you have been taking a big hit about the property taxes. You know, I come by your office pretty much every morning, and I see what you're doing, and you and I talk, and you tell me of the number of people that you make, you take the phone calls from. Social media can be good.
Yes, ma'am.
I hate when people put things on social media, and they don't go back and correct it. They'll come and sit in your office, get the correct information, know that it's correct, but they don't go back to social media and say, hey, I messed up, let me correct this. So Jim, I appreciate you taking the blunt of the force that you've taken. I really appreciate that. Again, I know social media can be good, but I wish people, once they get the correct information, would go back, because people take what people put on social media as the gospel, when it's not always the gospel. That's all I have to say, sir.
All right. I guess I should take the chair of the privilege and go first before I let everybody speak. My word's kind of hollow once it gets to me, but I will echo Jim's and Melissa's sentiments about our emergency management team, public safety team, appreciate their efforts. And also, I was gonna recognize the new city manager, Sylvester George, Chris Davis, and our miss. He's got a suit on, yeah.
Yeah, he looks good.
He did step on her. All right, we have nothing else. We consider it a workshop adjourned.
I'm sorry.